So, welcome Adam Marshall. Can you introduce yourself and tell us about the district you're hoping to represent?
Yes, Adam Marshall. I am running for city council in Greensboro District Four. Seat that is currently held by Nancy Hoffman, who is not running for office.
And what is one thing that people might not know about District Four?
District Four, I believe, is the largest voting district in the city. It encompasses a really broad and wide swath of area. Lots of colleges. We've got UNCG in the district, Guilford College in the district, Greensboro College in the district. So certainly, a lot of young folks are represented in District Four.
Okay. And I saw that you served on the Greensboro Zoning Commission as well. So you've seen how a lot of decisions get made behind the scenes. Can you explain how those decisions and affect our voters? And can you like, explain how it affects real life things like rent and housing prices and things like that?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I've, over probably the last fourteen so years, volunteered with the city of Greensboro in various capacities such as the zoning commission, which I chaired, Board of Adjustment, Human Relations Commission, the Greensboro Criminal Justice Advisory Commission, also chaired that. And currently, I'm serving on the ABC board. The city is a big operation and it can't run without folks that want to volunteer and, and give their time to help with some of these committees. Ultimate decisions on some of these obviously are made by council. But they certainly take the advisory opinions from these boards to heart. The zoning commission actually does have some final authority and say, unless of course, the case is appealed to council. But I've been able to get to know so many people with the staff and learned a great deal about city government and how it runs through that volunteer experience. And so my hope is that that's really given me a lot while I'm a political newcomer, I've never run for office before. It really has given me a leg up in that, to use the phrase, in the room where it happens. You know, I've been there and have worked with those folks.
So that's a long time to serve. So you've obviously heard a lot of conversations and people have probably come to you bringing up a lot of issues. So what have those conversations sounded like?
You know, you get less of that as a volunteer where the people are coming directly to you to kind of, because you're not representing a district, you're not representing a group of people. You're appointed by council. So they're really going mostly straight up the food chain. But, you know, for example, in zoning, we hear from both sides of a zoning application. We'll hear from those that are supporting and we also hear from those that are in opposition potentially to a proposed plan. And that those do come directly and, you know, we look at all of that information, take that to heart and then use it to make a final decision when the time comes, when the hearing comes.
And what's your reasoning for running for office opposed to just continuing the volunteer work you've been doing?
I'm from Greensboro, born and raised here, actually have lived in District Four almost the whole time that I've been around. Obviously, not while I was in college or in law school, but I'm raising my family here. Went to Sternberger Kaiser and Grimsley, so I was educated in the public schools. That's where my kids are going, which is a surreal experience to walk into the elementary school that you went to. But I just, I care deeply about Greensboro. It's home, it's always been home. And time feels right to step up. I think, you know, to the point of getting young folks engaged. This is, this, I kind of represent, I'm probably the youngest or one of the youngest people running. And I think it's time for a little bit of generational change on council to be able to view decisions through a different lens that they haven't had for a while.
Okay. And aside from volunteering, what do you do for work currently?
I am a partner at law firm Carolina's. I'm an attorney statewide practice.
And Greensboro is growing fast. You've talked about working with private companies to help increase our housing. So what does that look like?
Well, housing is obviously a, and I think this is one of our biggest needs in Greensboro. And it's a national issue. We have a housing shortage throughout the country. For a variety of factors, inflation, prices, certainly after COVID, we saw prices skyrocket. Values of homes went through the roof. And so we have a, I believe the number is roughly a 30,000 unit shortage in Greensboro. And that's not one type of housing, that's not in one location. We need more single-family homes, we need townhomes, condos, apartments, affordable housing, attainable housing. You know, I'd like to think I'm a relationship builder and that I can work with private stakeholders. I can work with the public sector to try to encourage and entice folks to, to build, to offer products that are more attainable. I mean, housing prices are just too high. Folks that are younger than me can't afford to buy a home. And that's hard. So we need to bring those prices down and part of that is kind of simple supply-demand. We don't have enough and so the prices are too high.
And what's a mixed-use development? Why should a college student or a young couple care about that?
Sure. Mixed use, I think, is a great idea and it's something that I really think we need more of in Greensboro. Mixed use means you've got a mix of residential, whether that's condo, townhome, apartment, coupled with access within the same development, however kind of big, small that is, of retail, of grocery, of office space, kind of that, that kind of, you see it more in larger cities, the walkable neighborhood, right? You walk out your front door and hey, I want to go to dinner, let's go to the restaurant down the street. Or I want to move closer to where I work. So let's, let's live in this condominium or apartment and my office is within a walk or a short bike ride down the road. And I think that is something that is attractive to folks and not just young people. Older folks that want to downsize, that want to, they don't want the yard to take care of. They don't want the, all the roof maintenance and the things that come with owning a single-family tract of land. Having some other options where you can kind of stay in your same neighborhood, but maybe downsize and have a little more convenience is good.
And you have a few colleges in your district. So what does that development look like over there? Is it mostly like houses or apartments? What is currently going on over there with that?
Certainly over in UNCG, the UNCG area, which I do think is, it is split part between District Four and the District One with a lot of apartments, dorms, I guess, condos being built along Gate City Boulevard. But I think that having some more of that, the mixed use would be attractive to college students, would be attractive to folks that just graduated that kind of want to stay, stay close. But also have some of those amenities closer by.
So then the first thing that comes to my mind is, do you have to prioritize one over the other? Can you do like the mixed-use development? So you have the college students who actually need housing while they're in school. It might not necessarily be looking for a home, but then you have the people who are graduating and the already established families who might want to downsize and do those things as well. So since you have that diverse demographic, are you going to have to make a choice between the two or is it possible to develop both simultaneously?
I think both can exist at the same time. I don't think you have to prioritize one over the other. And the product is the same, it might have college students in it, it might have a new young family in it. So I don't think you, I think both can coexist at the same time.
Okay. And in regards to like jobs, we've seen like a lot of big companies like Toyota coming into town. So economically, how does that affect Greensboro in the long run?
We have experienced some real, you know, wins over the last several years. Obviously Toyota, boom, supersonic, we just announced Jet Zero is coming to make Greensboro home for their manufacturing facility. Those are great things that are going to bring growth to Greensboro. One of the things that not everybody's going to talk about and it's not sexy, but we've really got to have some investments in our infrastructure, water and sewer, capability to get services to those employment centers so that we can continue that growth. So housing can occur out where those job centers are as well. We've got to be ready for that type of growth. And investing in our infrastructure, roads, water and sewer, filling potholes, you know. We've got to do those things to be able to sustain the growth.
And you said that your district kind of like splits off a little bit, District One, District Four. So how have your conversations been? Have you ever spoken to city council about your concerns before? And how are you prepared to have those collaborations with other districts you're going to be near?
Sure. They, almost every city council district touches the other one.
Yes.
So, and in fact, I think they all kind of converge downtown. Again, I think that I'm the type of person that can build relationships and will work well with my other council members. Can't do anything by yourself. It's a nine-person council and you need five votes. So it doesn't do anybody any good to not work collaboratively. That's what people are electing us to do, is to work as a group, to have a vision, to work collaboratively for not just District Four, but for all of our citizens. We're one city, we're coming from different districts, but we're one city. And we have to be able to work together to do the best thing for the city of Greensboro and the citizens.
And this work can get pretty tough. So who's keeping you grounded? Who is your like emotional support system? Who's in your corner?
Absolutely my family. You know, my wife works. She's blessed this run. She may be regretting that decision, but I've got two young kids, nine, six. You know, being able to go home after work, being able to go home after a council meeting and see them, that keeps me grounded.
Do you consult them before running? What were their opinions on like, oh, my dad's going to might be a new council member? Do you talk to them about that?
I absolutely consulted my wife before running. If I did not do that, I might not be still breathing. But being an elected official, and I'm learning this as, as I run, it affects your family. It's a family job. And if they're not okay with that, then it will make life harder for everybody. So having their support has been, you know, the best thing for me and I wouldn't be doing it without that.
Okay, that's nice. And what's something about you that people wouldn't expect from a candidate? Maybe something that you might be like, oh, this is my strong suit, people might not expect this about me or I have background in this area, just something like that.
Sure. Well, one, I'm an attorney. We're trained to look at things, you know, from both sides. I mean, that's our job. We represent our client. But we tell them often what they don't want to hear, the weaknesses in their case. So trained to look at both sides of an issue. We're trained to think logically. I'm also someone that, you know, I'm not running to be up there just to hear myself talk. It's actually been one of my pet peeves when serving on all these commissions is, you know, this meeting could have been an hour and it's two hours because some folks are sucking all the air out of the room. I'm a listener. I'm somebody that's going to do their homework on the front end, talk to folks behind the scenes. I'm not a grandstander, you know, I'm there to listen and to make a decision. I'm not there to hear myself speak.
And can you tell us about a big project that you worked on that speaks to your experience and leadership style, like the type of leader that you are?
Sure. I mean, in both the chair of the zoning commission and chair of the Greensboro Criminal Justice Advisory Commission, GC Jack, you know, my goal was always to bring folks together on the commission, you know, whether their ideas were, I mean, everybody's got their own opinions, we don't always agree, but we've got a process to follow and that's how we should work together to get things done. Specific projects, I mean, with the GC Jack, again, not specific project, but just getting everybody kind of to collectively understand what our charge is, what we're supposed to be looking at or not looking at and keeping everybody on task. And I think that's a leadership style. Because it's easy to go off on a tangent. It's easy to go down a road that we really shouldn't, this isn't what we're supposed to be talking about. This isn't the charge. And so keeping folks on task, I think is something I can help bring to the table.
Okay. And what's a time that you've might disagreed with one of those people and that you've moved forward from it and resolved the issue?
I mean, on zoning, we disagree frequently. And as far as moving on, you know, you take the votes and the votes fall where they may. And so, but at the same time, you're respectful of their voice, you're respectful of the why, the why behind their decision. And at the end of the day, you know, none of these groups that I was on, it was never really contentious. We might have disagreed on some things, but again, you're on a board, you take a vote. The vote goes where it does and you move on.
And what are some of those things you guys vote on? Just for example, so we can kind of know.
So more of that occurs in zoning. But, and I can just give kind of a little one-on-one on zoning decisions. But an applicant will apply to either rezone their property from, let's say, commercial, industrial to, you know, something, a less intense use or a more intense use. Those cases will come in, we'll go view the sites, we'll do our homework, we'll read the materials, we'll look at the land. And we will come together at a hearing where owners, neighbors, residents have a public hearing where they can voice either their support for a plan, their opposition to a plan. And then at the end of the day, we take all of that information together and we make a decision. And those are votes that occur at the zoning commission and some of those stand. Sometimes they get appealed and they go back up to council and then council has the final say. But with zoning, with the Board of Adjustment, those votes, I mean, you're voting on a case. You know, you might have three on the docket that day, you might have 12. I mean, I remember sitting up there. It was probably 2016-ish in there, things were starting to hum. We'd get out of a zoning meeting at 11:30 at night. We'd be there at 5:30, we'd get there, get out at 11:30 because you had, you had 12 cases on the docket that you had to get through. So you get more of that with those type of commissions.
And how many people are on the commission making those votes?
I believe zoning has nine. I think it is mirrored towards council. It's been a few years since I've been on it, so don't quote me on that number, but it is similar to council. You're sitting up at the dais where council sits. So it's either the same number or one or two.
And then speaking to the future of Greensboro, what do you hope people say about Greensboro in about like five years?
Yeah. What, when I was in college, people didn't think to come to Greensboro. I loved it, I was, but I knew it. And I knew how great Greensboro was. What I'm hoping is that we have the jobs, that we have the housing, that we have a community where people want to come back to or come to when they graduate. And that wasn't always here. When I was in college, everybody wanted to go to Raleigh, to Durham, to Charlotte, to Charleston. I rarely heard anybody wanting to come to Greensboro and I always thought, that's really odd, but it's the jobs. It's the housing, it's the where do you want to be and feel like not only am I there to work and live, but do we have things to do? I think we've come a long way since I was in college. And in five years, I hope we're even further along. I want my kids, I want my grandkids to be able to graduate college or whatever they choose to do and feel like they can come back to Greensboro, not just because mom and dad are here, but because they can have a good life, because they can find a job that pays them well. They can find a house that they can grow into with a family. I don't know that that is how folks have always felt about Greensboro, but I think we're getting there.
Then my last question is, if someone bumped into you out in public, maybe at the grocery store or something and they saw you maybe like with a pin on and was like, oh, you're running for office, why should I vote for you? What would you say?
I would say that I'm an extremely hard worker, that I'm going to listen to folks, I'm going to listen to their concerns and that I'm going to do my homework. That, again, I'm not there to just hear myself talk. I'm running to represent District Four and the city as a whole and to have a vision for what this city could be, to your point, five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road. And this is such an important election. And when I go speak to folks, I always tell people, you know, the national political scene, it really dominates the conversation. It sucks all the air out of the room. But you want to talk about the things that affect you every day? It's local politics. We're talking about your trash, we're talking about your water, we're talking about your taxes, things with your property. Those are the issues that hit you every single day. Not that national politics doesn't, but this really does. And I want people, especially young folks, to understand and get excited about voting, that this is so important. We're going to lose a, maybe four or five council people? All of these seats are contested. This is a real, this is a real change election. I think 29 people are running. You've got several that are retiring. This is an important election and we need to get out and make our voice heard and elect good people who want to do good things for Greensboro.
All right. Thank you for joining me today.
Thank you for having me.
Hi, Lily Bugs. I'm Lily Otis, journalist, student and founder of Not Just Headlines. And did you know that 95% of the people who watch our videos aren't even subscribed to the YouTube channel? And if we've helped you at all, we're just asking you to do one thing to support our mission, subscribe. Because we want to make sure that everyone is voting local, not just headlines.
All right, Nikki Smith, welcome to Not Just Headlines.
I'm glad to be here. This is a great day.
So can you start by describing your district to someone who's maybe never been on that part of town before?
Yeah. Well, District Four is made up of a lot of working-class people within Greensboro. It's not a lot of business or industry in our area. It's neighborhoods, it's communities, it's people that have been in Greensboro for a long time.
And what made you decide to represent your district?
Oh, that's an easy question for me to ask. I've actually been running for this election for more years than I want to admit because I've been passionate about our city. And more importantly, a number of years ago, I started seeing some zoning and some planning issues that didn't really meet or fit the needs of the community. And I was outspoken about it and we formed a community gathering to talk about things. And that one thing led to another where I began to advocate for our community, advocate for my neighborhood and advocate for not just District Four, but the city in what we do in planning zoning. Because sometimes planning zoning gets off the railroad track and doesn't really think about what the community is about and what neighborhoods are about and what we used to be.
Okay. So can you explain more of that process to someone who's not familiar with the zoning? So what exactly wasn't meeting the standards of the community?
Yeah. So what happened is that in this particular instance, a developer had bought some land on Friendly Avenue. He bought 4.3 acres of land that was made up of, I think about three or four what were older homes and wanted to completely destroy those homes, which, and he wanted to put an apartment complex. The planning zoning committee that we have here in Greensboro has to look at rules with regard to land usage. And while land usage is important and then rules and guidelines for that, you have to take into consideration what the community wants. It's not just what's in the law books. You got to look at what the community really wants. What are the homeowners that are going to be affected by that? The planning zoning people may or may not live next to that house, but you can be guaranteed people that live close to that area that's about to be rezoned, they're going to speak up and say something. So what happened in this particular instance, a developer wanted to put an apartment complex on Friendly Avenue. And as you may know, Friendly Avenue is really not made up of apartment complexes. Once you leave Holden Road and head down the street to the Great Church. It's mostly residential. There's a beautiful corridor down through there where trees are in the middle of the street. A beautiful meeting that was put in to give it a neighborhood a welcoming feeling. So it's kind of a gateway entrance to our community and we love that. We love that feel. We love that neighborhood feel that we have as a community. So what happened in that particular instance, the developer wanted to build something. The community was outraged by it and the community gathered together. We gathered close to 1,500 signatures of people in the community and said, wait a minute, this is not who we are. We don't mind building something there and we certainly don't want to stop the builder from developing, but let's build something that kind of fits the character of what we already have here. So we protested, you know, we actively protested against it. We went before the zoning planning board, we lost. They had certain rules and guidelines they had to follow. We lost the first battle, but we weren't through. The community then gathered together again and went to city council. City council listened to our case and they debated it and they discussed it. We finally were able to work with the developer and saying, you know, we don't think that 30 apartment complexes in this small piece of land fits our community. So we advocated and worked with him and so he backed off and came with a new plan. In the meantime, the entire community said, we need to protect ourselves long-term. So we started to put together what is called a neighborhood conservation overlay, which takes a very specific piece of land or a tract of area or street and says, we as neighbors want to make this neighborhood or this street or this section fit certain characteristics, whether it be the setback from the street, whether it be the tree canopy, whether it be the distance between the homes or the size of the home, whether it be two stories or three stories. And we were remarkable in that we were able to take a community and bring them all together, meet with city staff. I was able to collaborate with city staff and collaborate with the city employees and say, let's put another neighborhood conservation overlay together. And we had overwhelming 85% of the people on that street that said, yes, that's what we want. And we got a victory in that. Now, going back to the original problem, did we win our victory with the developer? We didn't really win it. We didn't lose either. We had a compromise. And the point I make of that is that I was able to bring the developer and the community together and bring up a compromise, something that will work together for everybody. So now what he's building, he's going to put a cul-de-sac in, it's going to look nice. He's going to build 10 smaller homes in there and he will sell those homes and he'll have a little HOA there. Much like you see in other parts of the town where you have something that's been developed that's kind of a really sweet neighborhood, a community. It's a community of neighbors that live close together. They may have a common long service, they may have a common street. They may have picnics in their little cul-de-sac. So I feel like we had a victory. We had a really good victory in that. We started out in one direction as a large apartment complex. We worked with the developers, say, hey, we really don't want an apartment complex there. And he was able to come up with a plan that fit what we felt like is best for us. So I tell you that story because it was a testament to my ability to help bring a community together. 1,500, almost 2,000 people to rally. I'll never forget the final meeting we had with the Greensboro City Council. And it was a big victory for us because the news was there, the newspaper was there. Everybody was there rallying for the city to approve our neighborhood conservation overlay. And when we did that, I'll never forget, one of the city council members said, I've never in my history of the city of Greensboro ever seen such a community unified together for a common cause. And for that reason, that city council person said, we can't not give them what they want. We have to listen. It's 85% of people on that street wanted it. And so the city council people said, And so the city council people said, how can we not listen to them? So I feel very proud of that accomplishment. I mean, I feel like that um uh that was a a feather in my cap or something I accomplished and it and it took us three years. It wasn't, it didn't happen overnight. The 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 process of doing all this is very slow. Unfortunately, sometimes it's boring, sometimes it's monotonous, sometimes it's painful. But you have to work with people and get them to collaborate with each other. And I'm proud of that.
What year was that that it started?
It was 22 or 23. I think it's not, I think it was in 2022, 22. It's been 22, 23. About three years ago, we started this project. It took us a year and a half to do the neighborhood conservation overlay. So we started in 22 and um that's when it all started. And then we ended it in in um last year when we got the neighborhood conservation, neighborhood conservation overlay approved. And the community was overwhelmingly happy. And we called the initiative. And if you haven't seen it, it's called Preserve Friendly Avenue.
Okay, nice. And when you say community, since you are going to be serving a diverse, sorry, excuse me, group of people, the community that you said came out to support, what did they look like?
Oh, it was all, it was, it was all ages, all colors. It was everybody. Now, there weren't any teenagers there, but there were families there.
Okay.
You know, but it was a very diverse environment, a diverse group of people. We met at Christ United Methodist Church on two occasions. We met at West Minister Preparatory Church on two occasions. We met with the developer over at Beth Davis Synagogue. Um, so we met, we had a number of meetings. And then we as a group, a smaller group of just 12 of us, we met with the city staff probably four or five different times to get the neighborhood conservation overlay put together. There were some final changes made at the very, very end, but there weren't anything that that the community objected to.
And do you think that the representative in District Four at the time was really, you know, doing their job in trying to lead that initiative and get it done? Or was it a lot of the community doing a lot of the heavy lifting?
I'm gonna be honest with you on that question. We had actually no help from the representative that represented District Four.
Okay.
And that, to me, was somewhat sad. We had a community pulled together with 1,500 of our constituents. And never one time did we ever have her show up at any of our meetings or even talk to us about what we wanted. I want to change that. I want to represent my district.
And with continuing to talk to your community, what are the main priorities that you hear that people want in District Four?
Again, it's not a difficult question. We want safer neighborhoods. Uh, we are, we are tired of drag racing down Wendover Avenue, drag racing down Friendly Avenue. We hear firecrackers and guns in the middle of the night. We've got to have a safer community. We've got to have better policing. We've got to have, we need to know who our police officer is. We want to know that our police officer is invested in our community. Unfortunately, I think the police department is short-staffed. I know they're short on their cars. They're short on being able to do community policing. We need to bring them out in our community. We want to invite them to our picnics. We want to know who they are. I'd love to know who the police officer is or the officers that represent or work in our district. And I want them to know us.
And I know in the past few years, there have been a little bit more police officers getting sworn in. And National Night Out was a big thing where the police officers go out into the communities. But what do you still feel like is missing in the safety aspect?
I think what you've suggested is great, but we need more of it. We need more of the police officers. Not going door to door, that's not necessary. But when there's a picnic, we need to, as a community, whether it be a picnic in Hamilton Lakes or a picnic over in Stormout Forest, we need to go out of our way as 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 community leaders in our community to invite the police officers, those events. Bring them out, give them a free hot dog. Let's have some ice cream for them. Let's celebrate their life. Let's celebrate what they do. Let's get them to bring their children to the community.
And what is your professional background that you can utilize some of those skills over the years to bring to the council?
The things I bring to the table to bring the council is obviously technology. I've been in technology since um the 1970s. And I've watched technology change over the last, you know, 50 years. And some of the things we can bring to our community, whether it be bulletin boards, electronic bulletin boards, whether it be websites, whether it be Facebook pages, whether it be text messaging, whether it be email blasts to the community, you've got to get the word out to what the community is doing. So that I know that a new neighbor is moving into the community. We've got to go back to the the friendly neighborhoods we had of the past. You know, I want to know, I just met one of my neighbors that's moved in their house less than three months ago. I didn't know who they were or where they were from, but I went to their door and knocked the door and said, hey, I just want to welcome you to our neighborhood. And I think we need to do the same thing. Everyone needs to do that. We're afraid to go out and meet our neighbors sometimes because we don't know how they're going to take us. We need not to be afraid of that. Our neighbors are our neighbors. We need to rely on our neighbors. You know, when 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 my lady, lady crossed the street with me, when she had an ambulance in her driveway, I was the first person to come out of the house and run over there and say, what's going on? Everybody needs to be that way. Not just stand back and have my camera showing showing us seeing blue lights and red lights in front of my house. Let's go over and see what's going on with the neighbor. How can we help you? And when her children showed up and we found out that she'd had a heart attack, you know, we all need to be concerned about our neighbors. That feeling and that um neighborhood friendliness, we've got to bring back to our communities. And District Four is perfect for that. We've got communities within communities. It's not just District Four. District Four is made up of, I think, about 35 or 40 smaller communities that all have their own identities.
And then it's hard to mention technology without mentioning AI. So what do you think about city council utilizing AI? Should they or how that should be regulated?
You know, you ask a good question about AI. I have some some friends that work in in technology within the city of Greensboro. And AI is being used already now. We know the IT department is using it. They're using it to to help develop computer programs. They're helping to develop graphics. They're helping to solve problems. You know, AI is here to stay. It's not going to go anywhere. Um, there's good and there's bad about AI. And we've got to be careful how we harness it because we can't trust it 100%. I saw a news article just last night about a young man um who actually committed suicide as a result of ChatGTP. We've got to put some guardrails around AI. And I'm not sure that can be done on a local basis. But as far as city employees, they need to be told that be careful what you believe in AI. Because what you search for, what you look for needs to be vetted and verified.
Yeah, what specifically from that story said that AI contributed to it?
Well, this young man, um, don't remember where he was, it was in the national news last night, uh, he was contemplating suicide. And he was talking and developing a personality or developing a friendship with the AI. And it was ChatGTP. So he was developing a personality or developing a friendship with an artificial intelligence computer. Eventually, what happened, he started saying, I want to commit suicide. I don't, I I don't feel like I have friends. And the AI told him, you need to call 988, the suicide prevention hotline. He said, no, I don't want to do that. So now after the fact, he just died this past April, they've gone through all the dialogues and looked at it. He kept on asking more and more questions. And the AI eventually suggests, well, I am your friend and your brother's not your friend and your mother, mother and father are not looking after you after I am, and I am AI. AI is not a human being. As a result of that, AI told him how to commit suicide. A and AI, he asked questions like, how should I do it? And if I hang myself, what do I do with the rope? And how, what's the best way to do it? He ended up taking his life. I think it was this past April. It was on the national news. So there is a lawsuit now today with family against the owners of ChatGTP. And we don't know where that's going to go, but we need some guardrails around this. And there's got to be some safety checks that AI can say, if someone's asking these questions, a red flag needs to go off. And a human's got to get involved in this conversation, not just another computer talking to another computer.
Okay, so what was technology like when you first got into your professional career?
Well, when I got into my professional career in the 1970s, uh, computers were not in your hand. Computers were the size of a room. You know, a computer was typically batch processing. You would run a job, a billing job or an accounts payable job. It was computer programming of the 19, the mainframe computers of the 1960s and 1970s. I've watched technology grow from the birth of Apple Computer to the IBM PC in 1982, to the Macintosh in 84. Personally knew Steve Jobs in those early years, got opportunities to meet with Bill Gates, some of the founders. Um, knew Steve Wozniak in the early years. And I grew with technology. So my technology experience grew from a computer programmer in the 70s to selling computers in the 80s to fixing computers in the 90s, to then later getting into dial-up ISP business. Today, I'm full-fledged into computers, whether it be voice-over IP, whether it be search engine marketing, whatever technology is there, I'm in front of it.
And with running a business, you have to make a lot of hard decisions. So how will you utilize? And what were some of those hard decisions that you had to deal with? And how did you manage them? Because that same skill is going to be used on council, talking with people and having to make decisions like that.
No question about that. In my business experience, I've learned to hire people and I've learned to fire people. Sometimes that's tough. You know, when you make friendships with your employees and you, you're a small company of only 20 or 30 employees, they're your family. And if you have, if you discover they're not doing the job they need to be doing, or maybe they're just mismatched for their job. If you can't move them into the right role, you may have to let them go. Now, I'm not going to step into the city with that right now, but I will tell you, my experience in in hiring, training and collaborating with people in the roles they need to be best in is is a five-star. I love working with people. I love bringing vendors together with engineers, with salespeople, with clients, and solving a problem. Someone asked me this past Sunday at church, said, Nikki, what business are you in? And I had to think about it, an older gentleman, probably in his late 80s. And I said, you know, to the man that was asking me, his wife was standing there, I said, I'm in the problem-solving business. And then he said, what kind of problems do you solve? He said, are you a psychiatrist? I said, no, I'm not a psychiatrist. I said, I'm in the problem-solving business relative to technology. If there's a technology plugin that can work with solving a problem, I want to bring that to the table, to the client or the solution and bring it out to them to use it.
Yeah, so I know you touched on it a little bit, but you clearly care about the community, but you have such a long history in technology and there's still a big technological boom happening. So what like, I like, what is that moment that makes you say, I just want to be a public servant now?
Yeah. You know, I've been part of technology and I, at this point in my life, I can absorb more technology every day. But I've got a wealth of knowledge that I can bring to the table, to the city, to show the city different ways of doing things, using technology. It's not something you can learn by going to college. It's not something you learn by reading a book. It's not something you learn by Googling the idea. You learn it from experiencing it and doing it yourself. And so the technology, I've made a lot of mistakes in my life. I'm not afraid to tell you, I've made mistakes with, whether it be computer programming or applications or working with vendors or signing contracts. I've made mistakes. But those mistakes I've learned from, so I don't make those mistakes again.
And was that a clear, like, technology off the route? Were there any other, like, career paths that you, like, kind of dabbled in on the way?
No, other career paths I've looked at is a business consultant. So so I, in my business I'm in today, I'm very blessed. The company is very successful, doing very well. It's it's done so well that I can step away from it a little bit. I'll still be involved in on on a weekly basis, but I won't be involved on a daily basis to run the company. I've got some great managers that run my company and I can be involved in it two or three days a week and invest my time in being a servant to the community.
And when with you serving community, how will you keep that line of communication open while you are also serving? So where are you showing up consistently where the people can meet you face to face and have these conversations?
Yeah, well, right now during the campaign, obviously, I'm meeting everybody I can. I'm going to every event that's being held anywhere. Uh, I missed the one yesterday that um Trey Davis had over at the Coliseum. I don't know if it was open to the public, but Trey Davis, our city manager, had an event at the Coliseum thanking all 3,800 employees for the great job they're doing. I'm trying to find out how I can engage in events that are all over the city, not just in my district, but anywhere. I was in one, uh, in District Five this past week and will be one over District Two next week. So I want to get around and understand the entire city, but I really want to get to know the other candidates and what they represent so that I can collaborate with them once I win this victory in November.
And what is your overarching goal for your district in the next four years? What can people look back and say that you specifically did for them?
Number one, we're going to have a change in in the in the view of crime. We're going to feel safer in going to the neighborhoods. We're not going to feel afraid of not going to say hello to our neighbors next door. Number two, we've got to do something with this housing crisis. The housing crisis is is a crisis right now. The price of homes has gone so outrageously high, young couples can't afford to buy a home. We need some type of incentives to not just incentivize young buyers of homes to buy a home, but incentivize builders to build homes in not just the high-end brackets, but also the mid-range and the low-end bracket, people for first-time home buyers. And I don't know how we help those builders do that because uh it's something that we we cross over into a different area of legislation. And in what we have control of is the council leaders, but we got to collaborate with them. And the third thing I will touch on, we need to address the homeless issue in Greensboro. There's two populations of the homeless population. One that are seriously have mental issues and there's programs for them, but we as a city have got to embrace with the public sector, the nonprofits to figure out how to help those people that are seriously have mental illnesses, whether it be alcohol, whether it be drug abuse, whether it be schizophrenia, or whatever it might be. There's another population over here that are homeless because they didn't choose to be homeless. They're homeless because they don't have a job. How we help them is different. And I don't want to put them all in one bucket. We've got to address the problems separately. And the people that are homeless because they have been displaced or they've moved here, we've got to address that issue very compassionately. Not with a iron fist like you may with someone who's mentally ill, but you may have to take them and take them to a hospital or take them to a place they can get something for substance abuse. They're two different groups and two different populations. It's got to be addressed separately. I think today, we're putting them all in one big bucket. Everybody just sees them on the street. We see them in the corners. We see them downtown. I walk downtown every day and I see them on the corners. I see them sleeping. I see them begging. I see them asking for money. And it doesn't make our city look very welcoming. And we've got to help them. And I don't have the solutions today, but I hope when I'm on city council, I can come up with some ideas.
And I feel like there's two parts of that that kind of intertwine in a way with the housing and the homeless crisis that we have going on. I feel like a big thing that we see currently is a lot of, again, no one's owning any houses or anything, but especially there is a big, a lot of renters. And then rent goes up, property taxes go up. And then people become homeless and then they're staying on the couch and then they just don't have anywhere to live. So do you often see city council members talking with the state legislators consistently to address that? Because you do have, like, limited amount that you can do on the council, but how do talks across the aisles look?
Oh, legislatively in North Carolina, we've got to get help from the state and the federal government to help with these problems. We as a city can't address this alone. We've got to work with our nonprofits. We've got to work with uh people that are experts in helping, working with the homeless population. I certainly am not an expert in working with a homeless person. I'm not an expert in helping someone with a mental illness or 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 a drug addiction problem. But I certainly can reach out and talk to them and say, here are the problems I see. How can we get funding from the state or from the federal government to help these problems? And so I've got connections in Raleigh and I've got friends that I know in places I can say, we need help. How can you help us in the legislative body of North Carolina for our homeless situation in Greensboro? Now, they've done it in other cities in North Carolina and so smaller suburban areas, you know, like in eastern North Carolina and western North Carolina. But we haven't really addressed it in the major population areas like Greensboro, Raleigh, Durham area, and the Charlotte area. So but if you look at smaller towns, I think they've gotten a little more attention to it for some reason. We need to figure out how they got that attention.
So do you feel like all of these politicians are united on this common goal? Or is there a little bit of more of a divide? And how do we address that to get people to actually care about getting an issue solved or getting to a specific goal? Because a lot of times in these interviews, I do hear the same things coming up a lot of times. But then in practice, people aren't on the same page.
I have reached out to a number of the candidates who run for city council this year. Uh, I won't mention any of their names today because I think that's something that needs to, the viewers need to understand. I've reached out to at least seven of the city council people that are running in this election now. I've met with them individually, either over lunch or over a private meeting, and I've met with some of them in groups. And I think this new breed or new blood of leadership that come into Greensboro does have some common belief systems, has some common threads. It's time to turn the page of what we're doing in our city leadership. You know, Jim Melvin was a wonderful leader for our city, had the fortunate opportunity to meet with him before he passed away. You know, I want to bring back the leadership that Jim Melvin had for our city. I want us to be proud of Greensboro. I want to, I want Jim Melvin to look down from heaven and say, yes, they're doing it now. They're they're bringing back the Greensboro that I love so much back when he was mayor. He was an incredible leader.
I've heard. And do you feel like we now have that opportunity with so many people, you know, stepping down? And we do see a lot of, you know, like, this could be a whole new city council. So do you think that Greensboro could realistically change in that atmosphere in the next few years?
There's no question about that. The city has to change in what it's doing. There's no question about that. The city has to change in what it's doing. The leadership that's, that's vacating its seats, it's time. We had career politicians that were in there for way too many years. I'm a believer in term limits. You know, I don't think that a city council person should be in city council for twenty-five or thirty years. I don't believe in that. You at some point become a career politician. I think we need fresh new ideas within city council. And I think the city council people that are running right now all have some common ideas. Now, we're all, we're not all the same, but I think we'll collaborate with each other. And I, and I spoke to, to them just yesterday and we, we thought about ideas and the one of them asked me, what are your five top priorities when you're on city council? What are we going to do the day after we're inaugurated into city council? And I gave him three of my ideas. He said, well, come up with two more. I want to know what your five priorities are. So we all collaborate together. So the first time in thirty years, we have an opportunity to change the face and the look of our city council. And I don't think anyone in the city council, I don't think anyone that's running for city council now wants to be a career politician. Right now, today, we have a great slate of people running in, in the city council that will bring a fresh new ideas and leadership to Greensboro. I've already collaborated with a number of them. I'm meeting with them as often as I can to make sure we know what we're going to do day one, what we're going to do day two, what's going to be our on agenda. So we're all talking from the same sheet of music. I think that Greensboro, one year from now, is going to be a very different place and I'm going to be proud of it.
I would love to see that. And then I don't know if I'm going to articulate my next question correctly.
I'll give you time.
But at the city council meetings, we see, you're given a chance to come up and speak directly to the council. And sometimes it feels like we're missing a lot of that youth voice. So what would you like to hear and say, maybe get some more young people to show up? But what perspective would you like to hear from young voters?
Well, let's define what you mean by young voters. Are you talking about the twenty-five and older, twenty and older?
Yeah, just pretty much anyone who is about to vote, who might be young and they're new to this.
Yeah. I think that we need to separate the, the young adults in Greensboro from the older adults in Greensboro. I think that when you try to put the two of them together, they don't go together well. You've got the older adults that have their agenda. And then you have the younger population in Greensboro that they don't have an agenda. They just want to be heard. I almost think that we need to have a time where we have a city council meeting where we don't allow anybody under the age of thirty to speak. You know, let's bring young people in. Let's do the adults like you take your kids to work someday. You know, let's have a day that we bring the young people in our community into hear what they say. Maybe we don't give them three minutes. Maybe we give them two minutes, but we do some rapid fire. And then we not only do, we let them speak, but we, we listen to them and talk to them and ask them questions. In city council meetings, so many times we get, send someone up there, they speak for their three minutes and there's no, no discussion. The city council leaders would just say, okay, you've had your three minutes, go away now. I think there's got to be a dialogue between the person speaking and the city council leaders. It's not a, it's not speak and go away. It's speaking, this dialogue and list of what you're saying. Now, again, that's the young people that I'm talking about. The adults that come to the room, sometimes they have agendas that just don't need to be in there. I'm not saying they shouldn't be heard, but sometimes the same people over and over and over again, bringing up the same things they want to preach about. And I think that the way you deal with people who are speaking at the podium needs to be a two-way communication, not just one way. Give them an opportunity to say something and then let a city council person say, well, would you tell me what you mean by that? Can you expand upon that? Can you tell me what you'd like to see in Greensboro? Can you tell me why you want to move away from Greensboro? What do you see special about Greensboro that's unique for you? If we don't keep the young people here in Greensboro, we're going to be in a retirement community.
And is there any of those perspectives that you are looking forward to hearing? So for example, maybe you're looking forward to hearing how the young people feel about transportation, like the bus. So like, what are some things that you're like, you feel like you need a bigger voice for young people to give their input on?
I think that the young voice is that we need to engage them more in community events, whether it be cookouts, whether it be picnic, some of the parks, some of the swimming pool. We need to engage those young adults, not just the young adults that are not married and have children, but all, everything from say twenty to thirty-five, that's a population that I don't think is well represented in our city. And I think we need to have time with them to hear what are their concerns? Do they feel unsafe in their neighborhood? Do they feel like they can go to the shopping center and feel like they can have friends that can go with them?
And then with that, say this young person approaches you in a grocery store and they're like, okay, why should I give my vote to you opposed to the other candidate? Or just give it to you in general? Like what would your response be?
I would say, I was your age once and I didn't get involved in the community and I wish I had. So please get engaged in, in the community. Know that you're a part of the future because without you, we won't have a future.
Well, thank you so much for joining me today.
Thank you very much.